Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the September 6, 2017, meeting of the Danville-Bowell County Planning and Zoning Commission. We appreciate your attendance, thanking you for being here this morning, taking interest in the business of planning and zoning. As tradition, we begin our meeting with prayer, if you bow with me, please. Our God and Father in heaven, we thank thee for this most beautiful day and all the blessings of it. We thank thee for the health you've given us and allow us to live another day. We pray that we live this day according to your will and in your service. We ask a special prayer this day for all those folks that are suffering in Texas from the hurricane, that you would watch over and care for and bless and protect them, and let those recoveries take place as soon as possible and officially as possible, return those people to their normal life as soon as possible. We pray for those that are in the path of the coming hurricane out of the southeast, that you would watch over and care, protect them, keep them all safe, and let them survive, get through this storm with little damage, and certainly keep them all safe physically. We thank thee for this community we live in and the blessings of it. We pray that the decisions we make this day will be for the betterment of this community and for all those involved, and that we will continue to grow and progress according to your will. We pray for all of our men and women, our soldiers who are fighting for our freedoms, and those first responders that are assisting those in the devastated areas that you watch over and care for, protect them, bring them home to their loved ones as soon as possible. Continue to watch over and care for us, guide, guard, direct us each day, forgive us when we fail you, we know at times that we do. Christ know we pray. First item on the agenda is to approve the minutes of the regular meeting, August 16, 2017.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Susie Moes, we approve.
Second.
Jeff, second. I'd like to skip from the agenda just for a moment. We have a letter here from Clyde Mullins, and Clyde has regretfully submitted his resignation from planning and zoning due to change in employment requirements, and so we regret that Clyde's no longer going to be with us, but he has submitted a letter of resignation and is very apologetic that he cannot finish out his term, but we want to, in the minutes, include the fact that we certainly appreciate Clyde's service to us and the contributions he made, and certainly wish him well in his future endeavors. Item D, financial report, July 17. Everyone should have a copy of that, take a look at that, please, give any comments or questions.
Jenny, I assume as we go into future months, we'll have a year-to-date actual and year-to-date budget as well, in addition to the monthly, as we move into future months? We will have year-to-date numbers as well as monthly numbers?
Yes, we can. Yes.
Any other questions or comments?
Your motion to approve? I'll make a motion to approve.
Terry Moes, we approve the financial report for August 2017. Clayton, second. And we want to welcome Clayton back. Clayton said some surgery or health issues, and we're glad to have him back this day. He said he's a little bit gimpy, but glad to be here, so glad to see you back, Clayton.
Thank you.
Motion been made and seconded, all in favor? Unanimous. Item E, letters of credit. Any comment on that, Stephen, you want to mention?
Yeah, just, you all saw that last month where we had to replace the letter of credit for Barry Metcalf. We didn't release the letter of credit he currently had because there was a technical flaw on the new letter of credit, so we held it a month till we got the new bank to work out the issue on the new letter of credit, so now we're ready to release the prior one.
Need a motion to do so?
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion to release it.
The Clayton moves that we release?
I'll second.
Susie, second. Question or discussion on the motion to approve? Hearing not all in favor? All unanimous. Item F, subdivision approvals, minor plat, Jack Goffy, 720 Quarry Road. Any issues with this, Stephen?
All three of those plats went through technical review, in compliance. We had a few housekeeping items on a couple of them, and again, the purpose statements are on there, but glad to answer any questions about any of the three, if you guys have them, and I think a couple of the technical folks are here representing the clients, if you guys have any questions for them.
Thank you.
Three minor plats.
Without a motion, we approve the minor plat involving the Goffy property?
Terry Moes, we approve.
Second.
Jeff, second. Question, discussion on the motion to approve? Hearing not all in favor? All unanimous. Number two, Larry Regina Sapp, Oscar Bradley Road.
Yep, all three of those minor plats went through technical review, everything's looking good. Three is a little confusing with some terminology, how we combine, but yeah, that plat is in compliance with subdivision regulations.
Motion to approve.
Jeff, Moes, we approve. Ben, second. Question, discussion on the motion to approve? Hearing not all in favor? All unanimous. And number three, Mark Van Steenlandt, 179 Goggan Lane.
I'll just mention on that, again, it's pretty straightforward on this plat, but you can see we created Track 2A, which is in your bottom right corner, 3.004, but what it also says is we created 2A at the same time we created 2B, which would be the plat directly to the left at the bottom, but then that 2A then gets combined with Track 1, which becomes Track 1A. So that Track 2B was literally just a transitional track till it's combined with 1, and that becomes Track 1A. So when it's all said and done, we're going to have a Track 1A, it'll be 16.80 acres, and a Track 2A, which would be, again, 3.004 acres. Track 2B will go away when it's combined with 1, so...
I'll make the motion, we approve.
Terry Moes, we approve.
I'll second.
Susie, second. Question, discussion on the motion to approve? Hearing not all in favor? All unanimous. Item G, public hearings on the zoning ordinance text amendment, Architectural Heritage Board.
All right, I'll start off with that. We've got some guests here that I'm going to hand off to, but what we're doing here is a little different than maybe you've seen on a regular basis. This is a text amendment to the zoning ordinance, however, again, we sent your packets out a week early, so you guys could get a look at these architectural design guidelines, and again, we appreciate the board getting us a copy, and then we made copies for you guys. But what the planning commission's role here is very unique and fairly defined. We're not technically adding these to the zoning ordinance, nor are we changing actually a sentence in the zoning ordinance, however, Article 14 of the zoning ordinance is how we created the historic overlay, and that section, and actually, Section 14-7 is how we do COAs, or certificates of appropriateness, in the historic district. There is a board that used to be called the Historic Preservation Commission, is now known as Architectural Heritage Board. That board uses a set of design guidelines to evaluate those COAs when they make those decisions. So Section 14.7.2 says they can have additional documents, so when the zoning ordinance overlay was created, it gave that board, created that board, created that overlay, and gave them the authority to create other documents to do that review. Those design guidelines are what they use to make those interpretations and those approvals for downtown and historic business owners. Those are called design guidelines, and so the planning commission's role today is to have the official public hearing. That board has met on this, they've drafted these, they hired a consultant, we've looked at them as a staff, and their board members are here, their chairman's here, and I'm going to hand it off to Mr. Tom Ty, sort of tell you what they're about, but our role is to actually have the formal public hearing and make a recommendation to the city of Danville, up or down, based on the outcome of the public hearing today. So this is the public hearing on this document, that you guys then have to forward some recommendation to the city. And I think as a courtesy to that board and the time they've spent working on this, again, I'm going to ask the chairman of the Architectural Heritage Board, Tom, to come up here and give you a little overview, answer any questions, and then there may be citizens here that also then want to comment on this document. The staff has reviewed the document, and we have no issues with the document as it's written. There are conflicts, though, we'll just point out, with some of the sign language in the zoning ordinance, that now that we have some new specifics in this on how signs, the types of signs, so it's going to require us to do some housekeeping on the zoning ordinance if this document goes forward.
Okay, this being a public hearing, if anyone wants to speak, we'd ask you to come to the mic, give your name, address, just for the record, please. So come to the mic, introduce yourself, name and address.
All right, good morning, folks. Tom Ty with the Architectural Heritage Board, and worked with most of you in this. I think Steve summed it up pretty well. This is, it's a little bit of a change of the rules, but it was more or less a housekeeping. There've been a lot of rules we'd worked with through the years that just weren't very clear. Some things weren't allowed, particularly as it gets to art, and I'll introduce two of my fellow board members here, and Julie Wagner will actually walk us through a presentation. She seems to be the technology person on this and the one gifted to do the presentation. Have Mary Gerard, and then Julie Wagner, and Julie, if you get this started.
Just for the record, would you give us your address, just for the record?
3185 Airport Road.
Thank you, sir.
Just Bowell County, just that much.
Thank you.
Actually, my driveway's in Lincoln County.
Good morning, how are you? I'm Julie Wagner, I live at 105 Venetian Way. Get that out of the way. All right. I'm going to walk you through basically, well, it is the same information that we provided the city commission at their workshop. See if I can get my little thing here to go. All right, you're going to hear some terms today, just, we love our acronyms. DAHB is, of course, the Danville Architectural Heritage Board's. COA, you've heard that already this morning. Certificate of Appropriateness. I do not know how to go back. CLG is Certified Local Government, and that is a program that's run through the National Park Service. They are the overseer of all kind of historic preservation guidelines. Let's try this again. Only 23 of our 419 incorporated cities in Kentucky are certified local governments, so it is a pretty small group, and Danville is one of those. I don't know what's going on back there. Okay, well, let's, okay. Design guidelines, every CLG has to have a set of design guidelines. Ours were pretty old, they were actually a hybrid of what was done in the late 80s. We had updated them probably around 2010, but for the most part, they were the old original document. I'm not getting anything here. Oh, all right. The guidelines are intended just to be the framework. These guidelines are much more user-friendly than the old document, they are more intended as an educational guidance piece, instead of a mandate of what you can and cannot do. You'll notice that the language is no longer absolute in the guidelines, as opposed to the old document. Oh, we're moving on. Okay. The process is the DAHB, you'll see here, then it goes to planning and zoning, and the city codes on public works. Those are the three entities that would typically have a role in any type of project downtown. I obviously am not talking fast enough because this thing is moving. The Secretary of Interior Standards, there are quite a number of standards that we have to follow, and these are just some of them, repair rather than replace, if you're going to clean your facade, use a gentle method that you can, so they're pretty standard guidelines that are the basis for this document. All right, I'm going to try to move forward here. If you look at this map, you'll see the red outline, that is the district, it's quite large. We expanded it, we think, in 2008 to take in KSD, because we just didn't know what was going to happen on that property, so that's why you see that big green empty space there. All right, we'll go over some of the significant changes to the document here. All right, it's more user-friendly, you'll see lots of charts and graphs and pictures, examples, serving as a guide for applicants. The descriptions are much better than the old document. It is reorganized, it does include residential and commercial in one document now, as opposed It is educational, and we have taken out most, if not all, of the restrictive language. No longer will you see prohibited or not allowed, you will see things like encouraged, discouraged, more looser terms, and that allows us to review in a better light. The guidelines are now better in line with planning and zoning, which is a good thing for all of us. We used to have a sign regulation that couldn't exceed 20%. If they brought a sign in that's 20% in an inch, it could not go through. Now it can. Your standard at planning and zoning is now the stricter standard on signage. We also asked them to include modern technology, things that exist now and possibly could exist in the future that we don't even know about yet, so you'll see language in there for how to address technical upgrades. If you look at page 14 to 26 in Section 2, that walks you through the process of a COA, and this document is especially helpful for somebody who maybe has never been before the board, has never rehabbed a building. It does spell out exactly what you have to do. There's a flow chart that takes you down every scenario and helps you walk through it. Routine maintenance, things that you're replacing with the same material, you do not need to come before us, we do not do paint colors. And then also in D1, in the very back, you'll see a list of suggested items that we will be trying to get a staff approval process, so that if they bring it in, they can just get approval without the board. We aren't quite sure how that's going to work yet, but for right now, that's just a suggestion for us to work on later. The document's more about what you can do, less about what you can't do, and I think that is in itself a business-friendly attitude. You'll never see us telling them that you cannot be permitted in this document, it's not in there anymore. We have why is it appropriate or not appropriate, and the Kentucky Heritage Council suggests that we use that language because you are applying for a certificate of appropriateness, so it helps us to tell them what is appropriate. All right, universal guidelines in Section 4, these are guidelines that apply to every piece of property, whether it's residential or commercial. All right. In the event that there's a conflict with the application versus the universal guidelines, then you would refer to the commercial or residential section, depending on what the And our consultant says it best, he feels that this is a more rational approach to sustainability of these buildings, it's, we've got to be modern, we've got to keep up with the times, and this document does allow us to do that. If you look at page 59 and 60, windows are probably one of the most important pieces of a facade, simply because they do set the tone for the look of the building. We do have a plan in there for replacement windows, and if some of you that have been around for a long time know that that is a big leap in historic preservation, it used to be that if you replaced your windows, you were not eligible for tax credits, you were not eligible to be on the national register, and now the modern technology does allow for replacement windows that are in keeping with the facade, so that is a big jump forward What a lag time on this keyboard. If you look at page 61, there are some guidelines for window replacement, and this is just an example of how this document allows the applicant to learn a little bit about what they're doing to their building. On page 70, Section 5 is your residential guidelines, and... I like it because it's more about ongoing maintenance and preservation and less about rehabbing the whole property. It used to be you had to rehab the whole building with certain standards, these are much more flexible and allows the property owner to work systematically at maintaining and preserving their home. We do allow for replacement siding in this document, fiber cement board, something called Hardy plank, I think you've all seen and heard about Hardy plank, that will be allowed. There are imitation materials that you can use to replace wood on the facade of a building. No longer do we restrict the type of roofing materials that a homeowner can use, it's a lot more flexible for them and cost-effective. We did add some more graphics about the neighborhood and streetscape and explain the siding of a property and why you want to keep it in line with the buildings. Again, it's just reinforcing that educational piece. And if you look at the commercial guidelines on page 84, we have things like placement of awnings, we love awnings. There is a thing called backlit awnings, which, if I can get back to it here, which we do not allow, and that is those plastic, I call them bubble awnings. I am not going to get back to that slide. Okay, we'll move on to murals. This is a totally new section. Well, I think there's a gremlin in the building here somewhere. There we go, all right. Awnings have to be seven feet off the sidewalk, can project out no more than four, I think that's pretty close to what we had. There's educational piece about how to install the awning so that you don't damage the brick, and again, we are discouraging the plastic vinyl bubble look in lieu of getting some more fabric and prettier-looking things. Signage, again, no longer restricted to 20%, there is no percentage in our guidelines anymore. It's all recommendations rather than mandates, and we do allow now logos and names in the windows, you were not allowed to do that previous to the adoption, when we adopt this document. So you can have a beer sign in your window, or a Nike sign in your window, couldn't do that before. Public art, this is a total new section for us, that was one of the absolute must-haves when we did this project. We want more public art in Danville, however, this document only deals with murals. Public art in terms of sculptures does not fall under this, because we only deal with We are not, we are not going to allow the art to be advertising or signs, so if a business comes and wants to paint their name across the building, still would not be allowed to do that. We are in communication with the city about how are we going to rule this art, and rule is the word, I don't know what else to use. We don't want to be the art police, we think it needs to be a broader group of people to determine what is appropriate, so the city is taking that under advisement. Do we want to set a separate board up? How are we going to handle that? So in closing, I think you'll find this document is user-friendly, it's modern, it's educational, and I think it's everything that we set out to accomplish in this document, and I hope you agree. Do you have any questions?
Questions from the commission?
Concerns, anything you see in here that you had concerns with?
I just have a question of, if something is presented and it's deemed not appropriate, and the owner goes ahead with it anyway, what happens there, if anything?
There are new nuisance and code penalties associated with violations, that was, that's a state regulation now, so there would be financial penalties possibly imposed on that. Is that right, Bridget? Yeah.
Okay. Any questions from the audience?
Is there an appeal process?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Is there an appeal process?
Yes, yes, and that's to the city commission. Any other?
Any other, any questions from any, one in the audience? Does anyone else in the audience like to speak to this? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, I apologize for technical lags here, thank you.
Life happens. Question, discussion from the commission on this item being presented to us?
We may let our attorney give us guidance, Mr. Smith, but again, our role is to make a formal recommendation on the design guidelines to the city committee, to the city commission.
Looks like this is fully authorized by the zoning ordinance, I was comfortable to see the appeal to the commissioners in there, and that's about all I would have to add to the presentation that we've heard.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make a motion for approval.
Jeff Moes, we approve as been presented.
I'll second.
Susie, second. Question, discussion on the motion to approve? Hearing not all in favor? All unanimous. Thank you all very much, appreciate it very much, thank you. Did a lot of hard and excellent work, and thank you all for that. Item 2, site plan, DNH Real Estate.
We've got four site plans to look at here, and I'll make a comment on the first one. First one, and again, we sent you guys packets out a week early, you didn't get those minor plats because we had a few housekeeping, but you should have had all these site plans before the meeting and a reduced copy, that's kind of what we're doing now. There's big copies of a couple of these at your desk, if you want to look at as we move through, Jenny has some if we need to, but this first one is dials, the center going on Woodlawn Way, that's the corner of Cunningham and Highway 150. Again, you've got the site plan, which is just one sheet, the firm's here out of Knoxville. This site plan was, again, a very comprehensive packet with drainage, erosion control, and on and on. We just show you the one documented as C3, again, it's a site plan. This dials, the center, I've been told, is going to be a 16-bed or style dials, the center, with approximately seven employees on each shift. This company is not foreign to me, I've worked with this actual company that's come in here before, and I understand they're currently constructing five or six of these facilities around the country as we speak, and are located in several other locations. Their engineer, Mark's here, if you guys have any questions, he may want to go over a few things. Everything on the plan, met the technical review, he worked out all his drainage and erosion control issues with the city ahead of time. We have one issue about an entryway sign, it's going to have to get fine-tuned at the sign permit process, and again, I'll let Mark give a little summary of his project, I'll be glad to answer any questions, or Mark can, you guys may have on the project.
Good morning to you all, my name's Mark Balak, I live, my office is at 1313 Calmia Road in Knoxville, Tennessee. This is a fairly simple little building with two points of entry, one point of exit. That's the little drive, it's just, as you turn onto Woodlawn Way, is a right-in only. Unfortunately, there is currently a... Unfortunately, there is currently a sign sitting at that location, and this was brought to our attention. And we are working with staff and the utilities to make provisions to shift the sign so we can leave the drive where it is and make the property owners happy. Because they initially wanted their signs closer to the road, but we're told they couldn't do it. Now, after meeting with Steve and Earl this morning, there's, I'll have to jump through a few hopes, but they said that it's possible to move the signs forward so we can leave the drive where we have it shown. And if you have any other questions, I'll be more than happy to answer.
I make a motion to approve.
Terry moves we approve.
I say.
Suzie seconds. Question discussion on the motion to approve. Hearing none, all in favor, vote unanimous.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Item three, the site plan, Danville Christian Academy.
All right. Again, this is an amendment to an existing site plan. I might point out, this one and the next case are actually amendments. And we treat them like full site plans, submittals. Again, this applicant had to pay the full fee, five sixty-one. Although what they're doing, you guys have already seen this plan with their landscape plan and phasing. And what they're doing here is basically deviating from the prior plan slightly. But unfortunately, it triggered another submittal. They're basically adding a hundred-by-hundred gymnasium to the existing facility. But again, because that footprint wasn't exactly as the prior plan, it triggered a full site plan submittal. I would think in the future, we might come up with an amendment process for site plans when they come in and do something within a percentage or a small change. It's either a reduced fee or some kind of in-house amendment we can do. But the applicant did everything we asked them to, and we've met with City Public Works and worked out all our issues. There's no change to drainage, parking. It's literally just building a gymnasium onto the existing facility as they move into their phasing plan for the site. I'll be glad to answer any questions. It went through technical review. Everything's in compliance. Everything looked good from the get-go. I appreciate the applicant getting us everything in a timely manner. And again, I apologize about the amount of scrutiny we had to do on what I feel is a very minor addition to a project you guys already saw a few years ago. Glad to answer any questions. You guys got anything? They're shy today, I think, back there.
I make a motion we approve.
Jeff moves we approve.
I'll second.
And Clyde seconds.
Excuse me. Clayton. That's fine.
Clyde sitting down there. Now it's Clayton.
Just call him.
Clayton, you hadn't been here in so long, I about forgot you.
Oh, my God.
Clayton moves seconds in motion. Question discussion on the motion to approve. Hearing not all in favor, vote unanimous. Thank you. Item four, site plan, Danville Convention Center.
All right. I've been trying to read without my glasses. That's never a good thing, but I got them back. This is an interesting one, too. This is actually amendment number eight on this. And the name, Danville Convention Conference Center, as you all know, things have evolved on this site, changed. The name may not be absolutely appropriate, what's happening. What we're basically doing on this site plan is what's on the left of your document, which is fifteen thousand nine hundred and twenty-five square foot, we'll just call storage, warehousing, mini-storage, some of it's climate-controlled. Those would be the bolder black boxes on the left of your site plan. And it does not include what you see, the retail space or the restaurant. Those are bolded out at a different time. But what we were reviewing was just to the left of that plan, the fifteen thousand nine hundred and twenty-five square foot of warehousing. Everything came in timely. Everything went through technical review, looked pretty good. We did get some calls from some neighbors, and it related to the very left of your plan. And you all have the one, we just got a revised one. What basically was conveyed to me was, there's a chain-link fence behind some of these buildings. It was unsightly. There was an unmowed bank. And we had this labeled in prior approvals as a landscape or a buffer easement, actually is what it said, the word "buffer." And some of the neighbors' concern was, why is there no landscaping in the buffer? What's happening on this side of the property? What are they going to build? What are they going to look like? And on and on. So I got with the applicant and the client, and we talked about this. Again, we conveyed to them that these are many warehouses. These are all going to be storage. One's a two-story, climate-controlled. The rest are going to be traditional warehousing and storage. But what we really drilled down to is this chain-link fence and the landscape easement or this buffer easement. I asked the applicant to consider doing some kind of landscaping within what was labeled a buffer easement and asked why we never had any landscaping as we moved on with phases. The applicant came back, and my plan's different today than probably yours, because we just got this in, and you can just see black dots on mine on the edge. And I'll just tell you what that is. The applicant has committed to twenty-one pine trees planted on twenty-foot centers in that screening easement. And so they're going to screen the whole backside of that property with pines in that buffer, in that fifteen-foot buffer easement. Go ahead.
My experience with that, though, that, there's a significant elevation change between that property and the properties behind it. And those trees are going to be well below any kind of buffer.
These trees are going to be inside that fence line. They're going to be inside the fence between the proposed buildings and the current fence that's there.
Which is considerably lower than the property behind it, correct?
Yeah, but the fence is higher. Now, there was also discussion about that bank that's behind the fence. And historically, some neighbors had maintained that. But again, the property owner, his fence stops where his responsibility stops, and that bank is sort of back there, kind of no man's land. And one of the neighbors' concerns, who's going to take care of the bank? What the landowner and the client has said is, we'll address the landscape concern and the buffer concern with these new buildings inside the fence. But the style of fence is important. It's stay a chain-link style because of mini-storage and security reasons, as opposed to doing some kind of board-on-board or just pure site buffer. They chose at least to address landscaping for the buildings. Now, as far as the bank and the planting, I'll let the technical gentleman here tell you what.
My concern is, I know when that previously was a Lowe's, they had screening back there. But again, if you had an eight-foot tree, you were still looking over top that tree. It wasn't screening anything from the property behind, is my concern. It seems like it's an oxymoron that you've got screening that's not screening anything.
Well, interesting enough, when we looked at technical review, we had a buffer easement with nothing in the buffer easement, too. We actually, it was labeled a buffer with no plantings in it. And the neighbors asked that something be looked at just to screen some of these buildings. These new buildings are going to be more kind of linear in style, and they are going to be warehousing. Now, I'm not sure exact plantings, what the caliber of the trees will be at planting. But if you look at our ordinance, these are pines. And I'm guessing that ten-year build-out, you can talk about how tall they'll be or actually what the buffer. But putting them on twenty-foot centers and doing twenty-one exceeds what our landscape requirement would have been had we landscaped it at some point. Again, you're right, there's an elevation. I went out there and looked, but not sure what else the applicant can do other than some kind of different style of fence. But it's important they stay with some kind of chain link. And I think the neighbors understood that. They just wanted some type of new plantings and something on maintaining the bank that's there. So I'll turn that over to Kendall here. What he knows.
Morning, Kendall.
Good morning. Kendall Wise, Vantage Engineering. And you're exactly right, there's a lot of elevation change. And the slope occurs on our property. So in other words, the top of bank stops, starts at the back of the yards, the residential yards. And then it drops off eight to fifteen feet down, you know, onto our property. So the bank is the property of the development. And it seems to get mowed by the people who live in the neighborhood. And we're talking about three or four yards right there. And I said mowed, but that's probably not a good term because it would be difficult to mow it because it's probably a two-to-one slope. It's something that you really can't put a mower on. So it's more likely to be weed-eated or something like that. But so at the bottom of this bank is where we're proposing to place these pine trees. And there's not really any planted landscaping that's been done on our property, on the neighbors' properties, which are the residential properties at the top of the bank. I noticed that there was one yard that had some trees or some screening planted. And but again, like you were saying, planting these trees, it's going to be a long time, really, before they're actually effective if that's the concern, is to not be able to see commercial land use from a residential property.
I haven't been out there, but, so the business is down here, the residents are up here, right?
Correct.
So why is there a fence there? That would screen everything. I mean, it makes sense to me. I don't know how to decide who does that. But, you know, it would seem if there's an issue with that, why would you want to wait twenty years for the trees to grow up? And you could build a fence right there that's six feet high or three feet or whatever is the sight, you know, view elevation.
And likewise, the people who own the residential properties could build a fence on their property so they didn't have to look at whatever it is that they are looking at.
That's my point. I mean, I don't know if it's necessarily a business concern. I mean, it is, but it, you know, some sort of a collaboration between the two, you know, because otherwise, the people that are living back there are not going to be happy. I mean, I don't think, if that's the only way we can take care of it. I mean, you know, I don't know. It just seems funny to try to build this up over here when this is already over here and you could build something smaller because the line of sight will take care of that. I mean, I don't know much about it technically.
So what's interesting on this site plan was, this is an existing site. So we're kind of skating on thin ice here a little bit, what we could ask the developer to do. Lot of the stuff's there, pavement, several of these buildings. They're coming in with an amendment to a site plan. What we do is look at drainage, look at parking. There was really no change. They're just adding fifteen thousand and some change square foot. The chain-link fence is there. Bank's there. You know, we didn't go as far as to say, let's relocate the fence. Their indication is they'd like to keep the chain-link fence style. That's important to having storage as they move into more storage for security reasons. A preferable option would be, you're right, to have some kind of board-on-board at the top, do something that's more of a visual barrier. However, the neighbors that contacted me just asked for some type of plantings. They were okay with the existing fence because they understood the need for it. They were concerned about what kind of, what we're going to be in these buildings, where they're going to be seeing the garage doors. Obviously, they're going to see the backs of these buildings. And they just asked more about architectural-related issues. So we didn't go as far as relocate the fence, change the site. And again, we had a landscape or buffer easement that was never addressed in prior years. So it was tough for me to say, let's rework this whole edge of the site when it's kind of all there. We're just adding more building rooftop. Or some of this is existing building, we're just repurposing it. But I think there could be a better option, but I left it open to the developer to see what they're willing to do. And we didn't push very hard beyond, we're okay with the fence that's been there.
Just as a thought, I mean, what would, can you approximate the cost of what it would be to put all these trees in and then apply that to something that the neighbors could use money-wise? I don't think they're really interested in the trees necessarily. I don't know. But it would seem like maybe there would be, you know, some sort of compromise between the business owner and property owners. If the business is going to already spend X thousands of dollars to put all these trees in that are going to grow in ten years, they might want to apply that money to help build something significant out of good materials, you know, like that stuff, I forget what it's called, that they make decks out of that last for a long, long time. You know, something like that. I mean, I don't know if that's a better solution, or at least it's an option. You know, because I know if I was living there, I'd want to put, I'd be putting a fence up myself, you know. So if you live there, I mean, that's, you know, some things that happen as a person who builds a house or buys a house in a location like that. So I'm not saying that the business is at fault. But at the same time, since they're neighbors, maybe they would like to work together on this and try to figure out some way to compromise on this and use the money in a way that'd be amenable to both parties. That's just a thought. I'm just thinking about if I lived in that house, well, I'd want to happen.
So, you know, that kind of horse trading could happen. And, you know, we'd be glad to do something like that. You know, we expect it's going to cost four, five thousand dollars to buy those trees and put them in. That's what we estimated.
That's my issues. None of us were on the board when this was approved. But I think going forward, it'd be nice if we looked at these things because to put in a screening that screens absolutely nothing is ridiculous to me. And whoever looked at that should have been able to see that there was, that screening's not going to do any good because you're putting it against a bank. And what you're supposed to be screening is eight or ten or fifteen feet above you. It's, so, and that's all because, you know, you need to look at what you're doing. Just because it's, we're supposed to put screening, we put screening, but if the screen's not doing any good, what's the point in doing it? You're just throwing good money up your bed.
That's right.
Unfortunately, our ordinance is pretty silent on that, and I agree. It doesn't compensate for changes in topography. We require landscaping on a new site, like you just saw, they're going to have to do landscaping. And it's pretty much designed for fairly flat or, you know, kind of one-on-one type of uses. And we don't address height when we're dealing with those issues or complete block. I mean, I think a lot of times landscaping is just softening the look. It's not completely eliminating the visual, you know, kind of non-compatibility. But I think in this case, the neighbors requested something to be planted in there, and that's all we conveyed to them, was that's what they wanted. Couple of neighbors, again, said something about being here, but they had to work. So they kind of worked through me and we worked through them. But I agree, in this exact situation, perfect scenario is a fence in lieu of some kind of landscape requirement when we're dealing with a deviation in that elevation. We let them do some kind of board-on-board that would work better. But in this case, it's the security aspect of the chain link was important to the client, that they're going to have to use chain link. But it could have all been kind of pushed on up the hill and still achieved the same outcome. But the fence was where it's been for, I don't know how many years personally. And again, we've approved this site plan with those exact elements on it with probably prior commission. So I don't know if it's the best scenario now, but we can, as we move forward in our landscape, think about this because we're going to see sites a lot of times where we have this elevation. And I agree, putting plantings across the front when the folks are uphill trying to be blocked from the view basically is pointless. So there should be some kind of waiver or trade-off on green space or something of that nature or distance setback when we can't really achieve a visual barrier. But, and again, I'm going to leave it kind of flexible. They sort of offered this up. We just asked they address it, and this is what they turned in yesterday to us. But I think we'd be open with whatever the client or the owner's willing to do.
Their issue is not to see the chain-link fence really in the buildings, right?
They're fine with the chain link. They just were concerned about the new buildings and the mini-storage use in general.
It would take care of both of those things if there was a fence, I mean, up from the top. So that's just a suggestion.
Does your client own the bank?
Yes.
So your client does own that?
Yes. And, you know, honestly, if you're in the backyard, what you're going to see is probably the rooftops of these storage units. And the zoning ordinance, when it talks about transitional yards or yards between residences and commercial properties, it says that planting should occur on the residential side of the fence. So when you use a fence as screening, it suggests an opaque fence with landscaping on the residential side of it. So that's one of those, in this case, would be impossible, but if, go ahead.
Also, planning, part of the planning and zoning, it seems that we should be planning for the future owners, too, of this property. So that, I think, is probably one of our responsibilities, unwritten, maybe. But it is something that we need to think about as a board because we want to make sure that the next owners of that property are happy and will buy the property. So, I mean, that's another concern of mine personally. And I think it would be, any person that saw a real estate site and looked back would put a lower priority on that particular property than another one that doesn't have that same.
So just to address where we are now, you know, we presented a plan, used to be a Lowe's originally, this property was. And it's evolved through the years. Just so happened to be this fifteen-foot buffer or screening area that had been dedicated in the past. There were some concerns from the neighbors, so we addressed that by suggesting that we put some trees in there.
As I said, that's just my pet peeve, but if the neighbors are happy, you know, I think there's not much we can do about it. So as long as the neighbors are happy and...
Everybody satisfied, Kendall, with what's been presented, neighbors-wise, or as you know?
You know, if they... You know, if they, you know, there's a, there's a space there that somebody's weed eating, you know? Honestly, it would probably be grown up and there would be a natural vegetated buffer if the neighbors would stop weed eating the, the wrong property. So as long as they don't cut down our, our pine trees and then come back and say, well, we want something better, uh, you know, everything's going to be fine.
Any other questions? Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Susie moves, we approve.
I'll second it.
Clayton seconds. Question discussion on the motion to approve. Hearing none, all in favor, vote unanimous.
Thank you.
Item five, site plan down from McDonald's.
Alrighty, this is number four. Uh, McDonald's, we've heard a lot about these guys, uh, good friends GR, from GRW here to maybe give us a little bit. But again, McDonald's turned in a excellent, um, set of plans. And again, you're all, you guys are only seeing one sheet of those. There's the full set of plans at your desk. Uh, this brings some interesting challenges for the staff as we move forward and think about site plans and how we record them. But that's the official plan. Um, including today, a new plan was submitted revised that has the lighting, uh, schematics on it too. So that's the full plan. And what we try to do is sometimes just look at one plan sheet and try to record one. Um, we're going to approach that a little differently, how we record land use certificates because that's the plan. And we need to make a reference to all those plan sheets. But you guys basically got 3.0 in your packet, which shows the McDonald's renovation. Slight demo is going to happen on the facade. Basically, it's going to become a dual drive-through style. And as you guys look at the plan, you see how the drive-through now moves basically three, three sides of the building pretty much as McDonald's modernizes to what we typically see in dual drive-throughs with preview boards and menu boards. Uh, in the other, everything meets requirements in the zoning ordinance, the landscape plan's excellent in there. Um, we talked about lots of things at the technical, technical review, um, parking and the site and orientation of the building and on and on. Uh, the applicants pretty much made all the improvements and, and changes that were asked about. As you know, there was also variances sought in this. So they've gone through several steps to get to the site plan approval phase. And next step would be, um, zoning permit. And this would be going through state plan review. It wouldn't be a local review. So unfortunately, it'll go through to the state first, then come back to the planning commission for the zoning permit. So they, they've still got long road ahead of them to basically start, uh, getting this project moving. But this is the, where they're at today, which is the site plan approval before the planning commission. Uh, and again, you've got the full set of plans. And, uh, the engine, the engineers here, if you guys have any questions for them on the site, how it's going to function, uh, what they're trying to do with the site or how the facade's going to look. I guess that's the one thing we didn't have was a conceptual elevation in there, but I think you guys are pretty familiar with how the site lies and, and the two-dimensional stuff that you got in front of you. I'd be glad to answer any questions about that. Again, the technical review went through and, uh, everything looked good to us. Um, drainage, landscape, parking, on and on. And, uh, they're here if you guys have any questions. Anything you want to add?
Questions?
Just one.
Vince?
Uh, the clearance, the clearance on the, on the drive-through. I've been up there a lot of time. And, uh, is it, is it, you know, because I know the one on, uh, over by Pearville Road, it's pretty tight there to get around, you know, if you're not going in the drive-through.
It's this gentleman right here. He's the technical guy. I'd like to hear what those guys say though.
I thought Jody would be sitting next to him.
You know, you know, I mean, it, it, it's pretty tight as, uh, sometimes when you're even trying to pull out of the McDonald's over on Pearville Road. It, it's a very similar, uh, trick, uh, what do you call it?
You mean the radius of the turn?
Monument plan for the, for the business.
Are you talking about the radius of the turnaround?
Yeah, and the people that are parking as opposed to people that are moving and going around.
Right, uh, so.
Introduce yourself, please.
Uh, my name's Mike Azlong, GRW engineers at 801 Corporate Drive in Lexington.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
There'll be no parking in the, in those, are those ones that are Xed out? Is that?
Correct. So, uh, essentially, this is going to be a total demolition and rebuild of the site. And the, uh, we do conceptual plans that get approved by McDonald's. So this is, this, this site will function, uh, much better than the, what site, what is there currently.
So the 19 feet that's there over here, right?
Yes.
The 19 feet includes parking. And then two, oh, 20, okay.
So we have a travel lane around the.
It's, it's fine.
Okay.
I, I just, I was thinking about the other one.
Oh, sure, sure. This one will function much, much better than, than what's.
Other questions?
Make a motion to approve.
Do you have a motion to approve?
I'll second it.
Vince seconds. Question discussion on the motion to approve. Hearing none, all in favor, vote unanimous. Thank you, sir. Under new business, budget committee report. Anything to report there on budget? Terry?
Uh, yes, so most of you should recall that in August of planning and zo- at the August planning and zoning meeting, uh, budget committee reported that we had received no responses to the ad that had been placed in the newspaper asking for bids to complete our annual external audit. And so at, at the August meeting, we talked about Steve was recommending that we issue an RFP to the accounting firms in the area to solicit, oh, bids. And, and the commission approved that we issued that RFP. Oh, and at the time in August, I did review some of the key elements of the RFP with you and specifically that it was asking for a five-year contract, uh, that's subject to annual review. So it's up to us whether we renew it every year or not. And that the bids would be due September 5th, which was yesterday, and that the audit would be completed by November 30th. Those were some of the kind of the key dates. Oh, we had a few questions from, oh, various accounting firms in the area about, oh, the RFP, but we received only one, oh, bid, I guess you could say. And that was from Kerbal Roads and Butler in Danville. And they did submit a proposal. I'm going to pass that proposal out right now. Oh, yeah, that's right. And, uh, yesterday, uh, we had a budget committee meeting with, uh, Steve and Jenny to review the proposal that we're passing out to you. Oh, Dave was not able to make the meeting yesterday. Clayton tried to make it, but we had some. Early. Early, and was not able to make the actual scheduled time. So it was basically myself and Jenny and, uh, Stephen who reviewed, reviewed the proposal. Uh, our main question as we reviewed the proposal, main questions had to do with the fact that the proposal didn't specifically refer to our, RF, RFP, saying that it would be in compliance with our RFP. And then secondly, the fee. Now, if you look under the, uh, the kind of the bottom part of their response, dollar cost, uh, their, their first year fee was $3,800 for the audit. That would be if we contracted with them now. We had a, we had $3,500 in the budget, so we pretty much had it covered in the budget. But that was about a thousand-dollar increase from what it had cost us in the prior few years. And so we were interested in why the cost had gone up so much. And, uh, after we discussed, oh, the RFP, I, I stepped outside the office and as it turned out, oh, Craig Butler was paying his water bill. And Craig is a member of, he's the Butler part of Kerball Roads and Butler. So we called Craig into the office. And, and, and asked him specific questions about, you know, if we did issue a, you know, a letter of engagement, oh, would they then basically meet the deadlines that we had in, in the, in the contract? And then secondly, asked him about why the price had gone up so much from the prior three years for the audit. And he basically shared with us that it was the new, uh, state requirement that has to do with the, uh, implementing GSAB 68, which is the fact that they have to do a lot of detailed work looking at the pension aspect, uh, of any of our, uh, any of our budgets and plans. And that that had basically increased the number of hours that would be required to do our audit by 30 to 50 percent, this new state requirement. And that's why the price was up. And so, uh, so, uh, after Craig left then, again, you know, we talked about it some more. And, uh, so I'm coming to the commission today, uh, based on the fact that, uh, we only received one bid. And the fact that we do understand why the bid is up to prior years, and it's a local firm that we do have experience with. Uh, that, uh, that I would recommend that the Planning and Zoning Commission authorize Steve to go ahead and sign a letter of engagement with, uh, Kerball Roads and Butler to initiate our, our annual external audit. Just reminding you that it is a five-year, uh, contract, but it is, uh, subject to annual review. So I would recommend that we go ahead and, and authorize to Steve to sign that later, letter of engagement. And I happen to be on a committee and a board, uh, of a nonprofit organization with Craig Butler. And, uh, who's a principal member of Kerball Roads and Butler. So I'm going to excuse myself, uh, from the vote just because I know Steve. Uh, I mean, I know Craig. And so again, uh, what, what I would recommend is that we go ahead and, and authorize Steve to sign a letter of engagement to get the annual audit going.
Questions? Hearing none, do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept.
Clayton moves, we accept. 10 seconds. All in favor, vote unanimous with one abstention. Item three, uh, legal, excuse me, item two, personnel committee report. I don't have anything reporting to you, Susie.
Yes, sir.
Jeff?
Yes, sir.
Uh, item three, legal report bylaws.
I'll just lead off and give it to Henry. Uh, again, I, I thought as, again, each month, just keeping things moving forward, working on, looking at things. I looked at our bylaws. Um, they were somewhat dated and just worked on a draft set, um, just modernized our bylaws to some degree, better define what we do. How our members are on and how we do training and on and on and on. Sent that to Henry and Bruce. They looked it over. They, they've got a couple of comments and I'll go with them. But again, this was just an attempt to, uh, modernize our bylaws as step one. Uh, someday we maybe get to our internal agreement and do some things there. But, uh, this, this just expands several of the topics in that basically two-page bylaws that we had from 1994.
Comments, Henry?
These bylaws provide a much more descriptive, uh, discussion of what goes on in the hearing and provide kind of a procedure, which I thought was excellent. There were two issues I wanted to bring to your attention. First is on page six, subsection J. And it deals with evidence in front of the commission. And it says, "The rules of evidence shall not govern." And that's pretty standard. This is not a court of law. So we don't have to have that particular, um, standard for applicants. But then it says, "Minimum due process standards shall govern the admission of evidence." And I was a little concerned that that might create a conflict with the first sentence, some ambiguity. So I would suggest that you strike the sentence that says minimum due process. I would suggest striking that sentence. My other concern, and this is something maybe Mr. Hunter could speak to, is, uh, why it is that we have witnesses, uh, presenting evidence under oath. Along those same lines, if we're not operating under the court's evidentiary standards, maybe the commission has feelings on this as well.
Yeah. Uh, it's interesting, Bruce and I had a discussion about this and, and funny enough, the chairman and I had a discussion about this. Um, boards operate different ways. This board has, I guess, has authority to do what they want. Our board of adjustments swears everyone in. I've never personally been in front of a planning commission, a board of adjustments, designed a report where I wasn't sworn in as a staff or citizens. Not only gave their name and address, but had to be sworn in before they testify. Again, it may just be different processes. I've personally been involved in some lawsuits related to that, and, uh, I'm, I'm, I've only been in hearings where everyone's sworn in. Our BOA does exactly that. And in fact, our chairman, I went to a meeting, he had to be sworn in. And he asked me, "How come we do that and they do that, we don't?" I think it can be either way. Uh, I put it in there that we would. I think at some point, if you think about it, if we're having a public hearing, these site plans are pretty basic. But if we had a zone change or something related to the comprehensive plan, you could imagine people are going to testify. You're going to ask them where they're from, where they live. But just having them swear that they're going to tell the truth is typically what I've been used to in public hearings, and it's how we conduct the BOA. I think it can come out if that's what you all prefer. Uh, it just lays out kind of a process on how we do a very formal public hearing. And really, it's, it's kind of drafted where when we've got lawyers on all sides, how everyone can kind of testify and cross-examine each other. Um, it's just more of a, again, give people understanding how we would conduct a hearing here in a very formal setting. But I think it gives you all the option to always deviate and have the hearing. Now, whether or not we're going to swear under oath, it, it's just an interesting that that's something that Henry's pointed out because we just talked about it. And if this board prefers just let people come testify with just their name and address, that's fine in my opinion. But I'm not used to that, and I'm not sure what it hurts to ask them to tell, do you swear to tell the truth? And they say yes or no. Um, and again, our other board does it the opposite, and I don't know what it means if, if they don't tell the truth or if they get up there and ad lib. Uh, I, I just know that's the protocol. So I'll let Henry or the chairman jump on that and just, uh, our BOAs made it clear that's how we're going to do business in those hearings. Uh, so they're just a tad bit more formal. That's the way I look at it, so.
What hit me about that when, when I went to speak before BOA is they asked me if, you know, if I was going to tell the truth. I said, "Well, I'm going to give my opinion." And what my opinions, I don't know how you justify telling whether somebody's opinion is true or not true. It's just an opinion. So I struggled with that issue personally of swearing I was going to tell the truth when I was just going to give my opinion. I wasn't stating any facts per se that could be found true or not. I've just given my opinion on what I thought ought to happen. So I guess that's what I struggled with, with this particular issue here is that lots of times people come up and they're just giving their opinion about something and there, there's no actual truth or falsehood being given. It's, uh, you know, if you like something, you like it. If you don't, you don't. And that's just an opinion. So anyway, that's, that was my struggle or issue with that. And I, I didn't feel it's, in, in our hearings here, I didn't feel it was personally necessary. But if, if the commission decides that we want to do that, then we'll do that. But that was just my thought on it.
Let me add that I, I see no harm in it. It's something we do not do in Jessman County. Uh, it might be a slight time-saving measure. And without the rules of evidence, um, or any chance of there being a, a perjury kind of citation for this, I, I didn't see any need for it. But if that's something that you think makes people take their, uh, public statements in a more solemn fashion, that could be good.
Other comments or thoughts on this issue?
Might discourage them from stating anything.
Well, I mean, the interesting thing is they are testifying at a public hearing, and you guys are quasi judicial board. You're like judge and jury. And I think that's why there's the formality and the ones I've been used to. You've got 80 people here to testify. It is their opinion. And clearly, I've heard people get up and say things that you know aren't 100% correct, but maybe in their mind, they thought they were telling the truth. So we, we log it as testimony and we move on, make a decision as a board. Uh, it, it just really formalizes those. And I agree with our attorney that, uh, whatever you guys want's fine. And, and our other board's a little different, and, uh, I think they're going to make sure it happens every time.
Thoughts, opinions, ideas?
So, so just kind of, if I could, can you humor me on J? Uh, so we talked about rules of evidence not governing, and we turn around, as Henry said, and we say, "Minimum due process shall govern the admission of evidence," but we say rules of evidence shall not be part of the standard. So do we strike the second statement of that?
That's my recommendation.
Okay, uh, because otherwise, you're right. It is, uh, it's a dual edge. You're telling one thing and you're saying something else in the next sentence, so.
Right. And concerns of due process need not be concerns because there's plenty of provision here for notice and hearing, which are kind of the two foundational elements of that.
So we'd strike the second sentence then.
In my experience, where, where reason that second sentence is something I've, I've seen is, Henry's right, rules of evidence don't apply. This is planning commission. But we've had situations where, specifically with petitions, someone brings in a petition, says, "I got 700 names here." Well, in the formal setting, the lawyers would all jump in there and say, "Well, even though we don't have rules of evidence, we're going to have these minimum standards to deal with that because that is a hearsay situation. It'd be great to take that as evidence, and sometimes we would and sometimes we wouldn't because the problem is the other side doesn't have the ability to cross-examine those 700 people if they're not physically in the room." So our hearings sometimes that I've been used to went very formal and sometimes very loose. We had both sentences to deal with. We don't follow rules of evidence, but in a situation of these kind of petitions, we're going to understand, we're going to follow minimum rule on that, which is they could be hearsay and we're probably not going to take a petition or put weight with that. We might take it as evidence and even tag it. But the board's now probably going to put a lot of weight into that, knowing that the other side can't basically ask questions of those people then. The people in the room are the ones testifying, and that's where you all have an opportunity to ask questions and cross-examine and back and forth. So that's why both sentences, I don't see a problem striking the second sentence at all. I, I think it just makes it cleaner and simpler. Uh, and we'll deal with petitions down the road on however the attorney advises us to deal with them.
Well, I mean, you could reword perhaps the first sentence of J, "Include some, uh, minimum due process standards may apply." Add something simple like that.
I'm good with whatever the attorney.
In certain circumstances, it may apply.
That's, I, I would advise against that kind of openness and vagueness. I think that this commission is able to give, uh, the weight that they deem proper to what evidence is presented to them.
So just strike the second sentence. Okay. Okay.
For all with testifying? Yea or nay?
Chairman's recommendation.
My recommendation is we don't, this is time-saving and I don't know that it documents or proves or it makes anything happen in attorney. You know, I mean, it's not like anybody's going to get sued for perjury, I don't believe. When, so, I think it's, it's, it's a time-saving issue and it's much more informal, I think, personal and friendlier to just simply proceed as usual. That's my thought on it.
So, do you need a motion for any of this?
Yes. If we're going to accept the bylaws, yes.
Then I move that we accept the bylaws with the change.
J.
To section J. And that we do not require an oath for people presenting before the commission.
Vince seconds. Motion made by Susie to accept the proposed bylaws with those few amendments, two amendments and Vince seconds. Question discussion on the motion to approve. Hearing none, all in favor?